Ready to roll? All right. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for coming today. We are here at the Rockville office of G car to learn more about our school board candidates. Early voting starts soon. Thank you very much for the mic test. Early vote, early voting is about to begin. And there's many different ways to do that. But often is the case, there's so much on the ballot. By the time you get to the Board of Education, it sometimes gets you, your endurance gets tested. But not nearly as much as you find candidates who have volunteered and on video to talk about their, their runs for the candidacy. Let me give just a little public service announcement. For those of, for those of you end at home, the League of Women Voters often sends out a voter's guide. And on page 45, they start to discuss the Board of Education candidates. And for all those who are registered voters in the, in Montgomery County, you get your official sample ballot. There you go, George, I'll put it for the camera. Look for it in your mail. Page 13 is where you could find, is where you get to see who you get to vote for, for the Board of Education. And that's why we do this. We're doing this to help people get informed and up to date on who they're voting for. With that being said, my name is Ed Kraus. I'm the, I'm the moderator today, and I'm also the chief executive officer for G car. I will do my best to keep this debate flowing along. And with that, I will lay out some of the ground rules. The ground rules are we are going to have two minute opening statements from each of the candidates. And we'll go through a series of questions and then we'll end with the closing statement, closing statements from each of the candidates who are here. We also are going to try and run, looking at my staff, just to make sure our videos of the two particular candidates who are not able, Carla Silvestri is not able to come, nor is Brenda Wolf. They are doing things at Montgomery County College. I bring that up just to say that is in the education realm and we're unable to attend. That being said, before I turn it over to everyone, I'm going to walk through the list, just so you know what is up. The at large race is run by Miss, Ms. Silvestri is running against Mike Erickson. Mike was invited, but is unable to attend. District one, Esther is here. Grace is, I do not see Grace. Thank you very much. Grace is not here. Scott in District three is Scott Joftis and Julie Yang. And District five is Brenda Wolf will be on video and Valerie. So.
I mentioned that even though it was District.
That's exactly where I was going.
Thank you.
Sorry. No, no, no. I say that, but let me be clear. Montgomery County, Scott and I were actually, we were talking about it beforehand. That's why it's hot, top of our head. Montgomery County residents get to vote for every single one of these districts. It is a, I don't want to say unique, it is, I don't know how unique it is, but in Montgomery County, all Montgomery County residents can vote either for Michael, Carla, Grace or Esther, Scott or Julie, Valerie or Brenda. And they represent, but then when they go to serve, they tend to have a little bit more focus on their particular geographic area. But they do keep in mind the entirety of the district. But is that an accurate statement? Okay. With that being said, I'm just going to go right down the list. And Esther, I'm going to turn it over to you for your opening statement.
Thank you, and thank you, everyone, for being here today. So again, my name is Esther Wells. I am candidate for Board of Education, M C P S in District one. I have a cert, I am a certified public accountant in the state of Maryland for over 12 years with a master's in taxation. I started my career at Ernst &amp; Young, where I worked on the tax provision audits of multinational corporations. Currently, I lead the state indirect tax department of Washington Gas Light Company, an $8 billion enterprise of entities based out of DC with a proven track record of monetizing multimillion dollar savings opportunities. I am a mom of two boys, a four year old and a nine year old who has developmental disabilities and attends M C P S. They are the source of my passion and advocacy for a brighter future for all learners. We are in this together. As your next board member, my top priority will be the finances. M C P S has a $3 billion budget. And so it's really important that we have someone with my professional financial statement experience and background to bring adequate oversight, transparency and accountability to M C P S. So I thank you so much for being here today, and I look forward to engaging in our great discussion. Thank you.
Just straight down the line. Keep it simple.
Thanks, everybody. Really appreciate you coming and thanks for the invitation. My, excuse me, my name is Scott Joftis. I'm on the Board of Education right now, but I got there in somewhat of a unique way. About a year ago, my board member Bethesda Chevy Chase area passed away. And so the board needed to appoint a board member to complete the remaining year of her term. I was appointed unanimously from among 18 candidates to, to serve that role. And I've been on that ever since. And now I'm running for a full four year term. Since I've been appointed, I've been endorsed by a wide range of leaders across the community. Former county executive Ike Leggett, Tom Perez, the past three superintendents of Montgomery County Public Schools, the past presidents of the Women's Democratic Club, the past presidents of the Montgomery County PTA. Excuse me. And I think the reason that they are, and others, and I think the reason that I'm being endorsed is because I have a really unique experience that I bring to the board. And that is that for the last, I've been a teacher, I'm an M C P S parent. But for the last 18 years, I've been running a small business. I founded a small business and have been running it, which has, is dedicated to advising superintendents and school boards. So when the board saw my application and I had a chance to talk to them about the perspective that I bring to the board in working with school systems across the country. I'm also an adjunct professor at George Washington University, where I teach education leadership and education program evaluation. That experience, I think, convinced them and those who are supporting me that I'm the right person for the job. Thanks.
Hi, everyone. You are here today because you, you think education is important. Our schools and neighborhoods are very interconnected. I'm Julie Yang, I'm running for District three. Now, I'm a mother of two M C P S recent graduate. I'm a new empty nester for two months. And then I have spent nearly 20 years as an educator, serving all students. First, as a classroom teacher, then as a data instructional data analyst, then as college and career counselor. Within M C P S, I have worked three different high school clusters. My last position was at Maguta High School, just above the road. And over there, I put into initiative that have increased our students' college application and acceptance rate by double digit and also much better career outcome. Now, I'm a community person, I'm a PTA leader. I establish village initiative, which serves students with special education. And right now I serve on the board of the Art of Montgomery, an organization that serves people with disability. I, as MCC PTA cluster rep, I helped bring ESOL classes, English as a Second Language classes, to Churchill High School. And I have also collaborated with local Chamber of Commerce on setting legislative agenda. Now, since I came out to run my campaign, many local leaders, including municipal leaders of Gatorsburg Mayor, Gatorsburg County Council has endorsed me. These are the people that are right now are collaborating with our school systems and have children in our school system. And during the primary, I have 84,000 votes, 60% of the votes in a three way race. I look forward to our conversation.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you all for being here. And I hope you're all enjoying the lunch. For those of you that are going to be watching this on videotape, I kind of wish there were a little bit of smell of vision because the meal that's being provided is extraordinarily delightful to be a part of. My name is Valerie Call. I am running from District five, which is the east side of the county. I'm a homeowner in Colesville, and I am also a former M C P S parent. I am certainly a Montgomery County taxpayer. And I come to this race as somebody who spent 32 years in the classroom in Montgomery County Public Schools. My passion has been serving in Montgomery County Schools. I taught primarily third grade and fourth grade. And one of the things I feel like I can bring to the board is the perspective of the experience of half of our enrolled students who have never really had somebody speaking up for that voice of the elementary experience on the board. And those are the years, particularly for our parents that are engaged in their children's future. A time of concern and certainly a time of developing a sense of who they are as learners, where their success is going to be, and how they see themselves progressing towards the future. One of the things that I feel we need to have is we need to have conversations at the board. Not just decision making, but greater conversations, greater communication, greater outreach to all involved in the process of what education looks like and sounds like in Montgomery County. Too often, it seems like decisions are made by a system and that the system has limited interactions. And one of the things I think all of us can agree to is the fact that as representatives and as somebody seeking your support, we all want you to endorse the idea that a functional Montgomery County Public School system means a better Montgomery County for everyone in the county.
Thank you all for your opening statements. Esther, I'm going to give you a heads up. You're going to get the first question. Well, the first question is for everyone, but Esther gets to respond first. And then the second question, Scott, third question. Introductions. Oh, introductions for the video. My bad, I jumped. Our video guest.
Okay. Good morning, how are you today? My name is Brenda Wolf, and I'm the current president of the Board of Education. I like to tell people how I got into this work. Most of you may know that I'm a civil rights attorney. But I became interested in opportunity and access when I was in the 12th grade. I grew up in DC, a product, I believe, of desegregation. So I was moved around quite a bit. And in the 10th grade, they were trying to decide whether or not to send us back to our home school. And my mother moved me to Elizabeth Seaton, a Catholic school that's still open over in Blatonsburg. And when I was in the 12th grade, I was looking for a recommendation to college because I wanted to go to Smith College in North Hampton, Massachusetts, a predominantly white institution. I had excellent grades, high SAT scores, and the counselor would not give me a recommendation. And the reason being that she thought that as a black student, I should go to a black college. Well, that was, that was really upsetting to me because what that told me is that she didn't see the possibilities in that little black girl. So fast forward to when I finished law school. And the second incident that really impacted me and made me decide on the course that I wanted in life was when I went to apply for a job at the FBI. And one of the questions at that time was, what are you going to do when we call? What's your husband going to say when we call at 2:00 in the morning and you have to go? Those two things really showed me what they think about women and what possibilities are available for children of color. So opportunity and access became my life's goal. I'm looking to ensure that we see the possibilities in all of our children.
Well, thank you for the opportunity. I am Carla Silvestre. I am the current vice president of the Board of Education. First and foremost, I am the mother of two girls, of one, a graduate of M C P S now at the University of Maryland, and a current 10th grader in our high schools. I work at Montgomery College as Director of Community Engagement, and I help our county residents connect with Montgomery College, enroll either in the associate's degree side or get workforce development training to improve their lives. I have a master's degree from the University of Pennsylvania in teaching English as a second language, and over 25 years of experience in education, youth development, community engagement and workforce development. I bring a unique perspective to the board because I see the education continuing every day through my work and board work from pre-K to graduation, to post-secondary education and to the workforce. Thank you.
My apologies. The last time we did this education debate in the last election, it was a pre-COVID world, and there was not such technology to work with. So now we are in a better place to get everyone involved. And to get, to get to that, let's dig in. As I was mentioning earlier, Esther, you'll get the, respond to the first question and each subsequent question down the road. You'll be the first to respond. Schools are back in session, and we are thankful to see in-person training. But there are concerns that despite high participation numbers in virtual learning over the last two years, the pandemic has left many students behind and possibly worsened the achievement gap. Do you see this as an emerging issue? And if so, how would you combat it as a school board member? Your first, oh, 90 seconds, basically.
Thank you, that's a great question. And so as a mom of a M C P S current fourth grader who is in a learning center, this has been, this problem is top of mind for me and is the reason why I am running for Board of Education. My company, we were able to pivot immediately to work from home. And in that time, the pandemic hit, daycare centers were shut down. So my then two year old was home with me and my M C P S learner, second grader was home with me. And so as a single mom, I mean, that was, you know, a nightmare. But I was able to rise to the occasion and be able to help my son focus online. But he didn't understand why his parent, why his teacher and his friends were on his Chromebook and he was sitting in the middle of our kitchen trying to learn. And so M C P S continued to test my son. So because he has autism and had resources that were taken away from him very abruptly, he was one year behind before the pandemic, and now he's three years behind post pandemic. And so I've lived and I see the devastation that that is having now that he's in fourth grade. And he's still unable to read. That has just exacerbated so many things in different areas of his academic career. You know, kids in kindergarten through third grade, they learn to read. So at the rest of their career, they read to learn. And so right now he's at that pivotal point, and a lot of our children are at that point where they're matriculating to our school system, but mentally they're unable to be able to perform. And so this is a huge issue. Some of the recommendations I have would be to offer the Saturday School, which I've joined both my children in, and to have more parents participate in their child's education so they're able to have the best path forward. Thank you.
Yeah, student achievement has just dropped off a cliff across the county, and it's alarming to see what, what has happened, not just from an academic standpoint, but also from a mental health standpoint, which we'll probably get to later. On the, on the achievement side, it requires a really comprehensive approach. And this board that I joined in January has invested a lot of resources in areas like extra tutoring, after-school programs. We're, we're biggest increase for teacher salaries in 10 plus years so that we make sure that we have the best teachers in our classroom and especially in our, our highest impact schools. But what's important to note here is that I think we all agree that a lot needs to be done. The question is, what is the role of the board member in affecting that change? And again, I think that's where I bring a really unique perspective, given that I work with school boards and superintendents. So let me just give you one quick example. We are in the process, I'm very proud of M C P S. They started this work before I joined in shifting towards a more scientifically based approach to early literacy, teaching K two, which basically involves more phonics and decoding work. So we've worked that into the superintendent's evaluation. That's how you foster systemic change. We're not in charge of teachers. We're not in charge of principals as board members. We oversee the superintendent and creating, creating system change requires working through her. Thank you.
Hi, Julie Yang, thank you for the question. As someone who have worked within the classroom in our school buildings, I bring the perspective of what works in our buildings. Now, since we returned to school, we have put in before school, after school tutoring, online tutoring, summer schools. Yet the recent data show that they haven't yielded the result that we hoped they would yield. Why not? We need to answer, why not? Why are these things not giving us the result? One of the things I see is our classroom teacher need time to teach. There are always additions. If you talk to teachers, they will tell you on their plate, there are a lot of additional admin responsibility on their plate. They cannot focus their energy on teaching. Now that is number one. Number two is we need to provide, we need to gradually bring back rigor and expectation back into our instruction with suitable support. If a student's family is going through difficulty or have a mental health issue, we need to provide that support, but at the same time allow teachers time to teach, bring rigor and high expectation back to our classroom. I think that we will see a much better result, make better use of our classroom time. Thank you for the question.
And before I start my answer, Ed, could you repeat it one more time?
Oh, sure, absolutely. Schools are back, and we are all thankful to see in-person learning. But there are concerns that despite high participation numbers in virtual learning over the last two years, the pandemic has left many students behind and possibly worsened the achievement gap. Do you see this as an emerging issue? And if so, how would you combat it?
I think one of the things the pandemic actually did was shine a light on a problem that already existed, and it just brought it much more into focus, that the system was not serving the needs of everybody in the way that it needed to. And it became very, very clear when we were all trapped in our homes and students were trapped in little boxes on multiple screens. I know when I left my school on Friday, the 13th, how appropriate in 2020, thinking that we didn't know what was going to happen next. The assumption was that maybe the year might end this way. And those children already had a cycle. They were already familiar with their teachers. They already knew expectations and were able to engage through to the end of the year. But when we came back the next year and we tried to as a system impose in-classroom instruction on that virtual world with new teachers, new coursework at all levels in elementary, middle and high school, when you had incoming kindergartners, and this was their first experience with education, or you had AP students who couldn't get the time on task to do what they needed to do because of being constructed into this small way. That's what created the learning loss in that framework. One of the things we need to do is we need to make sure that we are looking at curriculum that is not prescriptive, but is able to take the needs of each student individually and give teachers the time and the resources in order to meet those individual needs.
And now our video responses.
The data has shown us that the virtual learning in particular was difficult for our youngest learners. Our kindergarten through second graders had, did not, did not learn what they were supposed to learn during those critical years, and they have what we consider the greatest learning loss. So that, that is a problem. That is a focus of the work of the district for the next several years because it's going to take several years to help those students catch up. Everyone was impacted in one way or another, but as a, as a school system, most definitely our youngest learners were most impacted. How the school system is going to address that? Through a variety of interventions, first and foremost, tutoring by M C P S teachers because they are the most familiar with what's being taught in the classroom. Summer school, summer school, you used to have to pay to go to summer school. Now it is, been paid for by federal grants. And we are encouraging the students that needed the most to receive that additional time so that they can have more time with a qualified teacher to get there. So it's going to be all hands on deck to help our students that, that fell behind the pandemic to catch up. Thank you.
Issue, we've looked at the data most recently at a board meeting. We know that while the literacy numbers have improved some, the math numbers are dismal, and there's real cause for concern. And I would, I would venture to say that the literacy numbers are a mean number so that there's still quite a bit of concern for the students on the lower end of the scale. I think one thing, a couple of things we have to do is to provide tutoring. I know, I think we have to have individualized assessments of the needs of the kids. And again, as I said, we have to provide the tutoring. We have to provide the resources that are needed. We have to provide staff that is culturally competent also in my mind. We also are receiving, you know, funds for wraparound services. I think the community schools are going to play a big part in this because they're going to help us identify and deal with some of the issues that the students are bringing to school that impact learning. And of course, we have to deal with the mental health issues that we've seen emerge as a result of this. And when I say emerge, they're not new. It's just that they've become exacerbated during the pandemic.
Over the summer, the Board of Education declined to require students complete a financial literacy test, but agreed to revisit the issue next year. Other area school systems, such as Prince George's, Frederick County and DC, require financial literacy courses to graduate. One student at the time in favor of the requirement spoke out saying, quote, "We can't say, M C P, Montgomery County can't say that graduates are ready for, ready for the university and the workforce when they don't know how to apply for financial aid or how to manage a loan." Do you support a financial literacy class as part of the required curriculum? Why or why not?
Thank you. So I was on the board when that resolution came before us, and I voted against it. Not because I don't think financial literacy among students is absolutely critical. I do. The resolution was put out, and I said this publicly, in a very half-baked way. The administration had just finished telling us that they were not prepared to roll out a comprehensive financial literacy class for this school year. And I thought it would have been irresponsible to, to require it. The administration at our urging has committed to expanding financial literacy as an elective in high schools. And we're going to be collecting data during this year to see how, what the interest is among students. And also to your point, Ed, about other local districts requiring it. We're going to see what their experience was or is with that. We did not want to experiment on our kids. And I think this was the prudent way to get to a goal that I think we all agree is really, really critical.
Thank you for the question. Are you familiar with the Junior Achievement Program? That is a financial programs that is in our community. And I was a volunteer to go into middle schools to teach the junior achievement. They have a financial part here at our Edison High School. Now also, there in our community is Innovation Act Student Club. And I actually helped two local high school, one private and one public school, set up the Innovation Act Financial Literacy Club. And they are doing a lot of outreach into elementary school students. Yes, financial literacy is important, and we should have, we should teach it in our high schools and actually in our school system, I mean. Leaving it up to elective makes it to be people who most need it, students most need it and might not have room to, to take it or might not be aware of it and to take it. So that is not the way to go. And I propose this need to build into throughout middle school and high school as lesson plans in our social study or other courses so that every year students are learning different concepts and gradually master the whole financial literacy content. Thank you for the question.
I think one of the things that is most important to remember is that financial literacy makes you a good citizen. You understand exactly opportunity costs. You understand exactly where the checks and balances are and how to make things happen for yourself within your own personal budgets, as well as budgets at large. The students were the primary motivators behind the reach to have financial literacy. They were actually the ones that provoked it, promoted most of the testimony and did most of the advocacy in reaching out to people clamoring for this need to be met. For M C P S to address student needs by saying, and I'm not necessarily fond of the term half-baked, but to make it seem as though that was not something that was required, I, I think is disrespectful to the fact that this was motivated by students saying, this is what we need. One of the things that I think we need to do is definitely do junior achievement. As Julie said, as an elementary school teacher, we had junior achievement in my classroom. I think one of the other things we need to do is go back into our core social studies curriculum and make sure that as students are getting lessons on how government develops and how communities work, that we weave that financial piece into it. Because once that language becomes a part of every bit of their instruction. Because once that language becomes a part of every bit of their instruction, they get to own the process more. And when they become responsible for making financial decisions, their understanding has a solid foundation.
That's a great question. And that is part of one of the key pillars of my platform, especially as a certified public accountant in Maryland, understanding the importance of being good stewards of your own finances. I was able to use the great education of MCPs to propel myself out of poverty into the middle class. And I have reached back into my community by teaching junior achievement in my local high school that I graduated from, Watkins Mall High School. And so I do believe that one of the reasons for you to vote for Esther, Board of Education, is that I will vote yes, a resounding yes, to required financial literacy courses in our school. And take it even a step further. I'd like to see it just be part of the culture. Just have it normalized and socialized that having good financial sense, whether it's delayed gratification, right? So I have the saying that says act your wage or drive your wage, especially being part of the immigrant community, being part of the black community. Some of the things that we culturally do is we wear our wealth or we drive our wealth. And so I would really like to be that role model to our students to remind them that it is good to invest your money, to save your money, to, you know, build asset, build generational wealth. And so I think this is the first step in ensuring that we don't have another student loan forgiveness program that happens on the federal level that everyone now has to contribute to because we did it do, but right by our students by ensuring that if MCPs is the only education they'll have for a lifetime, that they're ready to be an adult and to be able to live within their means. And so you can check out my website, reach out to me, but this is definitely a very important conversation that I'd like to continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Esther. Our video responses.
Just say, I do support financial literacy as a class. I don't at this time support it as a required class. I want to look at the, the needs that we have around that because we require more credits than a number of the school systems. And we already have students struggling to meet those credits. So what we did do was offer it in every single school, but we didn't make it a requirement. And I'm certainly looking forward to revisiting that issue next year, being sure that we would have even staff that could accommodate teaching the, the course. Because I do know that this is the interest of the students. I know that this is an interest of the parents. But we do have to figure out how we're going to do this so that it doesn't have a negative impact on our students.
Very relevant question. Yes, I do support it. And I was, I am very interested in, in revisiting again this year. I am part of the Strategic Planning Committee and we purposely decided to make our goal preparing our students for college, career and community. And certainly, financial literacy skills are necessary just as much as mastery of English, math and chemistry and, and history for our wellbeing, for our financial security as young adults. And then of course, as we have, as we, if we choose to have families and so forth. So those are critical skills. We did not do it this year mainly because the blueprint for Maryland's Future, which is this reform effort that's coming statewide, is going to change graduation requirements. And so the school system recommended that we wait until we see what graduation requirements are coming down the pike from the blueprint before we add additional graduation requirements. I, I do, I have been working with the school system to integrate it into our math classes. More in the meantime, to have virtual options so the students can take it over the summer as an online course and to integrate it into our English as a Second Language classes.
To call you on this one particularly, I want to take a point of association privilege here is many different ideas from all of you. Appreciate it. We are definitely interested. Would love to engage with you in the conversation when it comes back around again. We work with, currently work with the Capital Area Asset Builders in their Early Home Ownership Program and Habitat for Humanity in Montgomery County. It is amazing how far people get along in life without having any of these financial literacy skills. So just as a thought, it's, we, we see it on years removed from high school, how financial literacy is the first time they're encountering it. So maybe better at 16 or 18 than 66 or 68. Onto the next question. You're going to love this one. And it's coming to you, Valerie. Or Valerie, my apologies. Julie, Julie. Boundary study. In May 2021, the Districtwide Boundary Analysis Report commissioned by MCPs was released. Among its key findings, WXY Consulting found that, quote, "Significant improvements to utilization are possible by making targeted boundary changes across the district," end quote. The board has taken no significant action on redistricting since the release of the report. What is your response to the report and how, how would you tackle the utilization and diversity issues MCPs faces?
Thank you for the question. Now, the report has some findings. And for me, I support our students go to the schools in their community. In any way possible, we should maximize the walking walkers for our especially youngest learners. And every way possible, we should reduce the bus ride that our students have to, to do. And we, boundary is ongoing with population growth or with the new schools being built. Now, we need to do a better job, a better collaboration with our planning department. This, we, MCPs must get into the conversation earlier. My children used to go to Farland Elementary School. After the new school was built, within one year, we have portables in the back. Now, if you go on Children Lane, two schools, Children Middle School and Locksmann Elementary School are right across from each other in a one-lane neighborhood street. And during drop-off and pickup, it's a very, very long line. So I believe that we need to get in early, do better with plans and use neighborhood schools and, and do more multi-housing possibility. So our schools can be diversified with student population. Thank you.
I'm always happy when the school district asks for outside contractors to come in and analyze exactly what's happening in the system. When provided with a report then sits on that information and we aren't really sure what the next steps are. What I am excited about is that now that the county has also had the anti-racist audit committed, committed, that that, they're taking that information and the boundary study is part of that. So this is a multi-level decision when it comes to what boundaries actually mean. I agree with Julie very much that you want to have community schools and you want to have kids, especially elementary, attend as close as possible. But then that also means is the programming at every school going to be the same? Which lends itself to another question because we know we have many specialized programs in different schools around the county. And will the boundary study affect the ability of students to attend those specialized programs? So there's lots of different decisions that have to be made. One of the things that I really want to make sure we're doing is that the boundary study is looking at overutilized schools and underutilized schools. And making sure that when we're looking at those places, we have the right numbers to equalize the educational load in each building. And to make sure that as we're looking at trends, five, seven, 10 years down the road for development, we're anticipating where boundaries are going to have to be and how that's going to affect us in the future.
Great. Thank you for the question. And so I've experienced the challenges of, of this study with my son when he was in the PEP program, the preschool program at the MCPs. And the closest program that could serve his needs as an autistic student was about 45 minutes to an hour bus ride away. And some of the reports I got back from his teacher and the daycare who did the handoff was that, you know, my son, he fell asleep on the bus when he got to school. He was startled. He was disoriented and sometimes he soiled himself. And that create a lot of concern and heartache for me because my son was being bussed across the county when you have inclement weather. It was a safety concern for me as well. And so I believe that students should be able to go to school in the community cluster that they live in. And so it's important for us to ensure that all of our school facilities have comparable conditions for our learners. And that we, you know, regardless of which of the 210 schools our child attends, that they're able to focus on learning, feel safe, secure. So that's ensuring that the HVAC system are working consistently. Some schools are getting out because the ACs are working, it's too hot or too cold. So I think that's important. Also providing programs similar to other candidates, providing programs within the cluster that will help kids to be career-ready, trade-ready or community-ready is important. And then my last comment would be that we just support our students collectively and ensure that they have what they need in the communities that they live. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I, I completely agree with everything that's been said in terms of focusing on neighborhood schools and looking at, at utilization. We're going through actually some new boundary lines in the Clarksburg, Clarksburg area. There are a few challenges that we're facing over the next few years that we should be aware of and you all should be aware of too. I'm sure you're aware as you're helping people find their dream homes. That is inflation is, well, two things. Let me start with the, the money that we receive from the state and county to support facilities. We actually got a little bit, received a little bit more than we expected this past year. But they pushed out most of the funds into years three, four and five. So that made, that required us to push some of the projects planned for the next year or two out. And we are definitely experiencing over enrollment in schools and, and stress on some of our facilities. And then the other big issue, of course, is inflation. And that's driven up costs by what I understand to be about 30% further delaying the building of, of schools that are in some of the areas that we need greater capacity. And so there's going to be more of these redistricting coming up over the next few years, especially as more and more kids return back to MCPs after the pandemic.
Thank you all. On our videos.
Yes, thank you. The boundary analysis, the headline result of that analysis was that, as you stated, improvements are possible when you move a large number of students at one time. And so we had the opportunity to do that when we did the big boundary analysis for the new Seneca Valley High School, which involved three clusters. And we were able to see improvements in the, the key areas of the policy, which is utilization, diversity. What else? A proximity to schools and consistency. So you're not changing the boundaries very often. And so what we decided as a board was to use that learning in our future boundary analyses. So for example, there is four or five boundary studies coming up in the CIP because we are building new schools. And so we are going to use that information and take advantage of that when we redo, when we do the boundary analysis, for example, for Woodward High School, which will be the next one, that will be multi-clusters. And so it gives us an opportunity to make gains in utilization, diversity and so forth when we are doing those large analyses. But the policy says we have to look at all four equally and that is something I support.
Okay. I think the report is to provide us guidance when we're making new boundary decisions. We, we weren't never going to just up and decide to do a total boundary readjustment based on the report. The report provides us information that we did not otherwise have about where there are opportunities available. We had already adjusted the boundary policy so that we could cross clusters, which is something we had never done before. But we have a number of boundary studies coming up. And what that study will do is provide us information on what it's looking like in those schools. Now, the information isn't even current, currently, but it gives us a basis to start with where we have opportunities in the schools that are going to be affected in the upcoming boundary studies.
Thank you all. Next question, teacher retention. Earlier this year, the MCEA Union passed a vote of no confidence against MCPs leadership by an 88-point margin. Our system has lost a particularly high number of teachers, not only leaving MCPs, but leaving the profession in total. How would you tackle this growing retention issue? How do we continue to build and maintain our school system as a highly sought-after model?
First off, the, the letter of no confidence wasn't just signed by MCEA. It was also signed by the Administrators Union, MACAP, and SEIU, the Supporting Services Union. So that's all three unions engaged in working in Montgomery County Public Schools with a vote of no confidence in the system and in the board. That speaks to not just the teacher experience, that speaks to everybody's experience at that time. But I think that the piece with teacher retention is a difficult one because this isn't something that's happening because of MCPs. This is happening across the country. We have under-enrolled all colleges of education throughout the United States. When people are taking on student debt and they're deciding what their future careers are, even though they may want to teach, they're looking at what it costs to take that load on and what the return is going to be. And while teaching may be something that feeds someone's soul, it doesn't necessarily feed them at dinnertime when they have lots of other bills to pay. So one of the things you have to do is you have to make it worth people's while to be willing to make sacrifices, but also be willing to come and work in this county. And to try to grow our own teachers from making sure students in our county can see themselves taking their place in the classroom. And I think that's really where partnerships with Montgomery College and other learning institutions in our area come in. I think it's also where MCPs and MCPA can find common ground to help build, grow teacher organizations from the students that we have.
Thank you. Sorry, I was deep in thought. So yeah, no, that's a great question. And I believe, you know, as part of my story and my journey going through the education system and MCPs specifically by, by myself, because my parents, as immigrant parents, right, they worked two, three, four jobs and they have third grade educations. And even if they wanted to help me, they couldn't. And so I am so grateful for all of the teachers that took the time to stay after school so I can stay in homework club and gave me a ride home or that asked me, what do I want to be when I grow up? And gave me bigger dreams than, you know, just going straight into the workforce. And so I have a deep passion and love for our teachers. And so some of the things that I believe would help them and give back to them and pay it forward would be to allow them to have their planning period so that they're able to, you know, bring out those great skills and ways to, to animate their curriculum and to build those relationships. Because really, students only remember the relationship. They don't remember what you teach them. They just remember that this teacher cared about me. This teacher saw me and gave me hope that I can do better than my parents or I can do better than my current circumstance. And so giving teachers back their lunch period, for example, so that they can have their self-care time in the middle of the day as students get their reset on the playground, teachers are able to get their reset as well. Work-life balance. So allow teachers, free them up to teach, right? And so build that relationship. Anything other than teaching directly with the students, outsource it to a volunteer or support staff so that again, we're helping our teachers focus. Also to remove any redundancies in technology, we'd be able to see that there's like three different grading programs that they have to enter grades into, which I'm like, let's streamline that. So I'm definitely all about our teachers and our students. Thank you.
Yeah, obviously, teachers are our most critical resource as, as a school system. I mean, it seems intuitive, but research has backed it up that teachers are the number one determinant as to whether the growth of students during a given year. So we need, we need to treat our teachers successfully. I will say to Valerie's point, this is a national problem and this was happening going into the pandemic. And the pandemic has only heightened that issue. In other words, teachers' morale falling sharply nationally, a sense of lack of professionalism among teachers, that they weren't being treated with respect. And all of those things need to happen at, at a cultural level. At a school board level, what's really critical is that we work closely with MCEA, which is getting challenging. I can talk further about this, but I wrote a piece in Bethesda Beat about the need for MCPs to do some things to engage MCEA in a more collaborative way. And I also said that MCEA need to be a more trusted partner in negotiating. The board recently gave teachers the largest salary increase in over 10 years. We're prepared to do that again. The Maryland Blueprint, which Carla Silvestri mentioned, is requiring that. So we are prepared to treat our teachers in a professional manner. And we just need to get to the bargaining table for that. Thanks.
Thank you for the question. Now, as a system, sometimes MCPs is being criticized as being top-heavy. Maybe it's time for us to take a comprehensive look at where are we allocating our Maybe it's time for us to take a comprehensive look at where are we allocating our professional certified staff? Are we making sure that classroom needs are being prioritized? Second, this is a national issue that needs local fixed. One of the things we can do is have a stronger partnership with local organizations in recruitment efforts. Last three years, I have helped community outreach, partnered with seven of the local nonprofits. And all these events actually brought in, each of them brought in a hundred fifty or two hundred participants. So I see a possibility there. Now, third, we have mentioned, no one get into education to be rich. But however, that's why we need to have an attitude of gratitude and a culture of openness. Involve our staff members early in conversations and decision makings. Allow channels for suggestions, feedbacks and questions at all levels. Thank you for the question.
Our video.
And we have nearly twenty-five thousand employees in the school system. The, the loss of the teachers, people leaving the profession is a national issue, not just Montgomery County. But we are competing with every district in the DMV for talent. And so we are doing everything we can to bring in new teachers, new educators. But also, you're, you're very much correct that we have to work on retention. People are, you know, in a post pandemic world, people are just valuing what they do for a living in a different way than they did the pandemic. And so we have to listen to their concerns and adapt. Because we, it's, as any employer knows, it's hard to recruit people and get good quality talent to the organization. So it is very important that we retain them. Some things that we are doing, we are, you know, certainly taking a look at working conditions in the classroom. Unlike other districts, we provide a mentor to first year teachers because we recognize that it is hard, particularly in the first few years to do that. And of course, we continue to make progress in our salaries. We're hitting, we're going to try to hit sixty thousand a year starting salary for our teachers.
That's a really tough question because, one, we lose a number of teachers every year to retirement. I don't know that the numbers change that much. I think people reassess their life after COVID and decided what's important. So a number of teachers who were even eligible to retire long before COVID finally made the decision that, you know what, I'm going now. But I do think we have to be in contact with our teachers. We have to understand the issues that are going on in the schools, and we do. People think that we should just throw more money at it. And I do think that supplementing teachers for the times that they're losing for planning or having to do other duties outside is a possibility. But we only have so much money to work with. And my experience as a manager has taught me that money isn't always it. What people want and need is to be appreciated for the work that they are doing. And I do appreciate all of the teachers. I think that working with the union leadership, we can stop this, as they would like to say, bleeding of teachers. But this has been a national issue. And COVID was nothing like we had ever experienced before. So dealing with it is, we didn't have a playbook. We did the best that we could at that time and we just have to move on from there.
One thirty, we are one thirty, we're scheduled to go to two. We have two prepared questions and I already have one question from the audience that I'm hoping to get to, really would like to get to. So let me keep, let me keep moving here. Equity and racial disparities in education. A recent audit, I think was mentioned earlier, was referred to earlier, undertaken by MCPS, surveyed over a hundred and thirty thousand parents, staff members and students, and found that while the school system has put together many initiatives to eliminate racial disparities, the system is quote fragmented in its implementation and coordination. The report also recommended a clear action plan for tackling next steps. I'm hoping you've read the report released last week. And what would be in your action plan to address these inconsistencies and inequities? Forgot where I left off. I think we're back to the beginning. Excellent.
Yeah, this is a great question. And so prior to the anti-audit, anti-racist audit being presented, I participated in the Special Populations Committee meeting where our Director of Special Education mentioned exactly that. Our special needs children, special needs black children, like my son, they are five times more likely to be over disciplined in our schools as early as starting in two thousand nineteen for more than ten days out of school suspension. And that rises to the level of violating their FAP rights, which is free and appropriate public education rights. Further, since then, the report shows that our black special ed students are five times more likely to be disciplined, over disciplined in multiple categories, whether it's in school suspension, out of school suspension, one day, two day, grade in ten days. And that level of disruption is really concerning. And so when this report came out, it was like, okay, that's consistent with what we're hearing from the various groups that are there to support our children. And so one of the things that I recommend as your next board member is that we need to have a standing agenda item that every meeting, we are going to request MCPS to provide the community with an update on implementation and where we stand and make smart goals, right? So we're not just going to say it's going to be a follow-up item. We're not going to just expect that no news is good news. We are going to hold our feet to the fire and say, I would need you to update the community on the progress we're meeting. Here's the baseline and here's the measurable period of time that you need to make some measurable results. And so that's one of the areas, but this is definitely near and dear to my heart. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I'm really, really proud of the school system for conducting this audit. It's not an easy, it's not an easy thing to do. And it really helped to quantify a lot of issues around black and brown children especially and staff feeling like they're not included, they're not welcomed, and they're not given the same types of opportunities as their white and Asian peers. Here's the concern that I expressed at the board table. I talked in my introduction about how I bring a systems level perspective to the work of, to the board. My concern is that right now, MCPS is not a coherent system. In other words, there's not a clear strategic approach for how to improve with aligned resources, systems and structures for how to get there. This is a two hundred page report with, I forget how many recommendations, but a lot of recommendations that are, I'm afraid are going to be laid on top of this incoherent system, which is going to put further stress and further responsibility on our teachers and paras and other staff without that systemic perspective of how we're going to make this sustainable and scalable over time. I've got a number of ideas for how to do that, and I think that's really the importance of the perspective that I bring to the school board. Thanks.
Thank you for the question. As a woman, as an immigrant, as someone who speak English as a second language, I myself have, have experienced both implicit and explicit bias within our school system. The anti-racism audit, two hundred pages of it, have not told me or shared anything with me that we do not already know. The devil is in the implementation details. The Board of Education have one employee, that is the superintendent. How do we hold the superintendent accountable? Whether we have perceived or real disparities in our schools, how do we address that? Now, our relationship with superintendent, we evaluate the superintendent. Our relationship with superintendent should be collaborative, don't have to be adversary. But if information are not forthcoming, if dollar signs budget are not located to follow our strategic planning, that at times we cannot rubber stamp any proposal that we need to hold, help the system transparent and accountable. Thank you for the question.
I think one of the things that is really important to understand about this audit is that this audit used a lot of different information that already existed in MCPS to help gather its information. And that part of that was the boundary study, but part of that was also the climate surveys that every student, every staff member and invitations to parents are sent home for them to participate in that. One of the easiest ways that we can start to engage people to make sure that all voices are coming to the table are to make sure that as we invite parents to tell us about their specific experiences within the MCPS community, that those climate surveys are given to people in their native language, in the language that they feel most comfortable addressing their concerns in. Because right now, that's not something that's happening. And we know there's trend data that shows which communities, which schools have the lowest return on those surveys. One of the things MCPS can do, and the board can direct the superintendent to do, is to send the communications team out to those communities to make sure that we're gathering those voices so that people understand there is an explicit way that they can be involved in getting their voices and their information shared at the table. We cannot address what sits in darkness. And so we have to make sure that we're bringing everybody's voice into the light as these changes have to be implemented to make sure that we have an equitable school system.
Yes, I did spend quite a bit of time reviewing the report. And it, it's, as I said at the board table, it is a nice compilation of many, many of the feedback that we've gotten from families in the fifteen years that I've been in the school system and certainly in the last four years that I've been on the board. I think that in order to address this fragmentation, we really need to figure out what are the high impact activities that we can do that will give us the greatest result? And really communicate that with the community to say, okay, we think we have addressed this. Are you feeling it? Are you seeing it in our schools? So for example, people came to testify about their, if their English language learners themselves are inability to communicate with teachers, which is so fundamental in the parent-teacher relationship. So that could be a high leverage activity that we could tackle. Teachers and also school safety, like some students feeling like the, maybe they are not aware of the bullying harassment form or it's not being, not being taken seriously. And students of color are feeling more vulnerable than our general population. So I mean, rather than trying to do everything and not doing it well, I really want to focus on three or four things that are really going to have an impact on our community and put it out there to see if it's actually being felt by our families.
The anti-racist report is very interesting. As a black woman, it didn't tell me anything that I didn't already know. Okay, let's start with that. But I do think what MCPS does is they try to fix everything at once. I think we need to review the report and wait for it because, you know, we don't have an action plan yet. The action plan is going to be developed in conjunction with the community and the school, the administration and the teachers and everybody that's, it's going to have some input into the action plan. But I think that whatever they come up with, we have to focus in on two or three things and do them well. Not try to do everything. I mean, they might come out with ten recommendations. I don't think it's realistic for us to start trying to tackle ten things. I think we ought to, we ought to, we ought to go in on the things that we think we can accomplish and do them well. But we should not try to tackle everything and we should be getting input from everybody on what that should look like.
All right. Last prepared question. Scott coming your way. Budget. While the county is bound by maintenance of effort to fund MCPS at ever increasing levels, our school system's needs will only further outpace available funds. Since the Board of Education has the power to utilize over fifty percent of the entire county budget, how will you maximize those funds? Would you push for additional funding over MOE? And if so, from where would you propose the county get those?
Thank you. So, oh, that's a good, that's a good. So this past year, the administration recommended basically a maintenance of effort budget and we on the board pushed back on that. We ended up getting a pretty significant increase. This year's budget's about two point nine seven billion dollars. One of the things that I've been driving since I've been on the board is that we are the number one district in the entire country, country, that in terms of the percentage of our operating budget going to staff, so salaries and benefits, ninety-two percent. Low average is around seventy-five to eighty percent. So that could be a really good thing. You know, education is a people business. We want good teachers. We want good administrators. We want good staff. But the fact is, is we don't know. And one of the first questions I asked in my role on the Fiscal Management Committee is, are principals experiencing the staff that we're sending their way from the central office in a coherent way? And the answer from Dr. McKnight and Ms. Rubens, who's the chief of schools, she oversees all the schools, was no. And so my question is, then what are we doing, right? So going, moving forward this year as part of our agenda of the Fiscal Management Committee, we are looking at that ninety-two percent of two point nine seven billion dollars and determining, are we using the staff in the way that is most likely to support students, families and ultimately get higher levels of student achievement?
Thank you so much for the question. We are half the county's budget. And one of the things that come to me is that we need to be good steward. That means we need to be transparent with how we spend the money. And, and then we need to do a better job gathering community feedback and determine our strategic planning, where we are going to put our money. And our partner includes our students, parents and community member who might not have children in our school system, but who so, who is also at a state of how well our school does, our school, schools perform. Now, one thing I would really like us to look at is, how are we using the money? Are we doing everything just by ourselves? What does that mean? Give you an example. We are now heavily investing in our students' mental health services, which is wonderful thing I support. Now, is mental health just a Monday to Friday, seven to three P M. issue? Or it takes more than the school system to tackle this issue? We need to do better collaboration with nonprofit and government agencies that make us more agile and responsive in responding to students. But also, that means when we talk about budget, this is not just one line item from MCPS. That is the line item from the community groups, that's a one line items from Department of Human and Health, Health and Human Services. So we have a better coordination of efforts.
Thank you.
With two hundred and ten schools and growing, with over a hundred and sixty thousand students, with over twenty-five thousand employees, all of those expenditures go together to make up what that budget is and all of those supporting services. And we already alluded to the fact that inflation is increasing costs over what we've already budgeted. So if you go back and you look at MCPS's organizational chart from fifteen years ago and you see that there's the Board of Education, the superintendent, and then you see the different departments that are listed, you'll see that there's about three or four main departments with a couple of boxes underneath. I invite you to go ahead and look at the MCPS organizational chart as it stands now. It takes up almost a two-page Excel sheet because we've become so heavily laden in our administrative positions that it really is, while when times are good, having a lot of people that are in different leadership is a way for us to grow people in our county and to grow opportunity for people that are employed by the county. It doesn't necessarily mean that in these times, that's the investment that we need to make. We really need to take a look at what those job descriptions are, how they serve the system. And some of those people perhaps need to move back in to supporting our students more directly and supporting our system more directly and providing direct services. There's always leadership and there's only a limited pot. And we have to make sure that every dollar that we're spending is a dollar that goes directly to meet student need. And we have to make sure that every dollar that we're spending is a dollar that goes directly to meet student need.
Thanks for this question, and this is exactly where I think I can add the most value on the board as a certified public accountant. I have already taken a look at M C P S's operating budget coupled with the. Every six years is a report that is done by the Office of Legislative Auditors. That looks at the how M C P S manages their funds. And this is causes me great brave concern. And again, it's why I'm running. I think there are just so many things that I've identified as a community member. Where I am stepping up to the call and offering my services. And so with the three billion dollar budget currently putting into perspective. M C P S has about a hundred and sixty thousand students and with three billion dollar budget, they're spending on average, but eighteen thousand. Eighteen point three thousand dollars per pupil to educate them, which the national average is only seventeen thousand dollars. And so I think we need to look at results, right? So if community members are already making above average investment into students. Then I'd like to see that play out in the proficiency rates, the literacy rates, the graduation rates, like we have to have something to show for it. Which right now I don't think we do. And so we've. We're trying to address the mental health concerns of our students post pandemic by using our S R funds, which are one-time funds. That receive from the federal government to pay for wellness centers in all twenty-five of our high schools. But our mental illness or our mental health crisis is not going to go away once those funds run out in September twenty twenty-four. So how are we going to pay for that? The Maryland Boot Plan for Education is a four billion dollar investment for ten years, over ten years. That we're going to be making in our students. Again, how are we going to pay for these things? And so I think it's critically important that we have someone that's a certified public accountant on the board. Looking at the numbers and helping to ensure every dollar of every dollar makes it to its intended purpose. Thank you.
Onto our last two video statements.
Right, so very important question. As we all know that, you know, high quality education comes with its costs. We are a people institution and so the majority of our budget is personnel. We need people to run our school system of a hundred and sixty-one thousand students. Let's remember that maintenance of effort does not take into consideration inflation, for example. And so everything costs more the next year and the next year. And we're all feeling the, the. The cost of inflation right now in just in our grocery shop has gone up. And so. That's just something that we have to keep in mind. Yes, we are, if we're going to have more students and everything costs more the next year. Then yes, we do have to ask for more money beyond the maintenance of effort. What the maintenance of effort dictates. Maximizing resources is a priority of mine for the upcoming term. We have, we do not have a good system of figuring out what is working well and what is not working well. So I have advocated for a program budget from the Board of Edu, from the administration. That will give us a better indication of. What's working and what's not working so that we can maximize resource and hopefully not have to ask for additional funding. But can better utilize that nearly three billion dollar budget.
Let me just say, we can always use more funds, but we are not a funding authority. We don't have any taxing ability and the only place the county can really get funds is to raise taxes. And I'm not sure that there is a feeling that they want to do that at this time. So what we're doing right now is a program review. And what we're looking for is trying to figure out what programs really are not. Serving our needs based on the demographic, demographic changes and that the changes in each of our schools. So I think that yes, I'm always looking for more money because our needs have increased. The monies that we're spending on mental health issues, a lot of that money is going to go away because it came through. Emergency funding from the federal government through the state. So yes, we are going to need money to address those issues. I would look for an increase over M O E because M O E doesn't even cover inflation. But how we, how they would do that, I really don't know because we do understand. That, that there are other agencies to be funded. And if you look at it, the school system is third in line for that funding. I think parks and recreation comes first and. Some other things. I, I don't have it right in front of me, but I think that. It's been shown that the school system is third in line. So while we are fifty percent of the budget. That we do recognize that there are other things that have to be funded too, and we're not the funding authority. So unless there's a willingness to raise taxes, I don't know what's going to be able to be done. But we do have significant needs. And needs that were not there before COVID.
All right, if I may, I want to, one last question, but appointed personal association privilege on this one, I would just share with you. Four or five years ago, I don't know if many of you are familiar when transfer and recreation taxes were increased. Deal with school issues. I know a lot of you spoke about collaboration today. Unfortunately, I have to say at that time. We did not even know there was being transfer and recreation taxes were being considered for schools until the day before. It was introduced at the legislature. That is a bit of an issue, given the, but apparently. Brenda made some comments about the not having an authority. But you do have, you do bring people in and apparently in that particular case, a lot of school advocates, I'll just leave it in a broad umbrella. Did push the county council, did have conversations unbeknownst to other stakeholders. Such as home buyers and the home buyers of the district. I, I pointed out only to say is. This is just one step and we want to work with you. We are inextricably tied to you. The better the schools are, the better all of us all are. That being said, I'm going to get to closing statements. But I have one question from the audience, which I think is a pretty good one because you've kind of alluded to it earlier today and in different questions. If elected. What specific failed school board policy or program? Over the last twenty-two years, I don't know why twenty-two years, but twenty-two years, would you eliminate? What failed? School board policy or program would you eliminate? Did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay. Who was last left? Julie, I guess I'll give that to you because Scott had the last question.
Okay, thank you. Wow. Okay, this is a very good question. I need to think about it. But one thing. I would say, since I have ninety seconds of time. As a board member, sitting on the board, I would not be rubber stamping. Any proposals. Just from the school system. Give you an example. We just talked about the budget. Right now, we heavily depending, depends on M C P S to provide the budget for us. Any report is prepared by the staff. I propose the board need to have an independent financial analyst. So that we can do our, some independent analysis and form independent opinions. And that helps better oversee the board. Now. Moving forward, I understand completely your concern about involved communities. And I just mentioned that the stakeholders include students and families and parents. But also people who do not have students in our school system because you are part of our community. We need to have your buy-in. We need to share our strength and our struggles, our triumphs. We need to open our door and break the silos so we can all work together. Thank you for the question.
A nine million dollar contract was awarded to update and improve the grading and reporting system in M C P S through a program called Synergy. Which was sold to the county saying it could accomplish certain things and make teachers' lives easier. And make communication for parents easier with parent view and for people to be able to log in and see students' grades and information. It is not. It is cumbersome. It is, does not talk to other programs. And it was promised that it would talk to elementary school, middle school and high school equally. It does not. It only enter with interfaces with middle school and high school grades. Elementary teachers. Are still having to upload information into multiple different places. It also gives teachers yet another email where they have to be checking for contact. And parents aren't sure which email they should be using when they want to contact their teacher. That was a big fail, a very big fail. It did not produce the results it needed to produce. I think the other piece that we can look at in terms of budget is the money that was spent on the leader in me program. While that's put in place to help try to grow grit and resilience and perseverance in students. I think that we have a lot of organizations here in the county. That do that same kind of mental health outreach and programming. And that's money that if we were going to spend it, I would much rather instead of buying a nationally normed program, I would much rather seek. Our in-state, in-county resources and invest in those programs. So we're actually using M C P S money for M C P S students with M C P S supporting Montgomery County programs.
Yeah, that's a great question. And that's one of the notes and thoughts that I've given thus far as a candidate. And so I think it's really important for us to stop creating or utilizing the funding formulas. When it comes to the social programs, after-school programs and to just say, well, based on the calculation, this school or this jurisdiction will receive X amount of dollars. We need to ensure that we are funding programs that are effective, that are really meeting the need of our students and when they are. That we then extrapolate that to the entire population and we just, you know, either revamp, revise or scrub programs that do not work. We cannot continue to do the same thing over and over and throw money at things that are not effective. We need to also invest. And carve out funds for new programs, new innovative ways that vendors have identified an unmet need. And advance or quickly be able to test it and see if it's a viable option to place it to the pool of programs. That are working. And so that is definitely a great question and that is something from a financial standpoint is a better way. For us to get more bang for our buck without having to again, come back into the, the well of taxpayers to ask for more money.
I would say two things. One, Ms. Silvestri referred to a program budget prior to this year, the budgets that we receive on the board from. M C P S have been very long. They're, they're basically line item budgets that are very, very difficult to understand. What programs and strategies are being implemented? We can see each line item. So in other words, we can see all the different staff, but it, it doesn't roll up into any useful budget. For the board or the staff to make a decision. So as Ms. Silvestri suggested, that's a process that we are currently working with the new chief operating officer to do that. The second thing is that happened about twenty-two years ago. So I wonder if that's what was being referred to. Is that M C P S won the Baldridge Award, which was a really big deal. The Baldridge Award is given to. Organizations of all types that have aligned systems for improvement. And M C P S was the very first school district ever to win that. We've gotten way away from that over the years. And we really lost this idea of connecting and aligning systems, resources, structures and strategy. In a way that makes it clear what it is we're trying to accomplish and how it is that we're trying to get there.
Scott, that. Great way to end the questioning. Appreciate it. Obviously, there's no responses since it came from the audience. I'm going to turn it over to you. I believe we're just going to keep going in order. Valerie, I think it was your turn. So I'll give you first crack at closing statement. Let me pass the microphone.
This feels like it should be karaoke instead. Thank you very much for inviting us all to be here today and thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. Just in my head, I'm reflecting on what Scott just said. Having been a teacher at Sherwood Elementary while we were pursuing. The Baldridge Program and having people come from all over the country and all over the world. I had visitors. From Japan and Germany as well as other companies, countries coming in to see how we were handling our instruction. How we were handling that sort of movement toward excellence was extremely powerful. And in the many years I've had teaching in the county, in leadership positions and in participating in lots of different work groups and. Advisory committees and councils, I want to say to you that I appreciate the fact. That as I walked into this room today, one of the things I saw was the artwork that showed the connection. Between students and recognizing just how important where we live and how they live. Creates a good school system because it creates a good community. So I would ask you to please consider. Having that representative voice from somebody who has spent their entire professional career in the classroom. Serving our children, being a part of this community and being able to bring that voice and representation. To discussions on the board because it's a voice that has not been in the board in my thirty-two years of living in Montgomery County. And I think it's important and I think it's time. Thank you.
Thank you again, everyone for coming out today and I really enjoyed the discussion and thank you for the audience's question. And so again, my name is Esther Wells. Check out my website. Vote for Esther dot com. Vote for Esther for Board of Education in District One. Again, as a mom of two boys that are currently in M C P S, I'm here for the long haul. I'm here for the medium term and to help anywhere I can. In the present to help move our school systems forward. And so as my top three priorities. It will be financial statement or the financial operating budget accountability, transparency. And oversight to ensure that our students have what they need. Also, high academic achievement is extremely important that we focus on getting results, having high standards for our students and giving them the tools they need, clearing the roadblocks. Whether it's food security, getting parents involved, immigrants, parents, I believe. Would need more assistance, whether it's pairing any type of community involvement with food distribution or with free onsite childcare. Or just any incentive that, you know, we parents, they're trying to provide for their families. And so we just need to do more to engage parents because. When parents are engaged in a child's education, they have the best chances of success. Also, I think we need to ensure that our most vulnerable populations of students, special education students, black and brown students, low income families, all the identities and communities that I represent. I will be able to elevate their voice to the board and ensure that these communities are no longer left behind, but they are. Validated and able to provide that input. And so I thank you all so much for being here today. I thank you for considering me as your next board member. And I'm around for any further questions. Thank you.
Yes, thanks, everybody for hanging with us. There's a reason that I was appointed unanimously by the board. There's a reason that superintendents and school boards from across the country seek out my counsel and advice. There's a reason that after finishing my dissertation at George Washington University, I was asked. To immediately, immediately become an adjunct professor where I teach educational leadership and program evaluation to master's students. There's a reason that I'm endorsed by the last three superintendents of M C P S. The past presidents of the Women's Democratic Club, the past two presidents of the Montgomery County P T A. And many, many others. And there's a reason that my political hero, Jamie Raskin, has said. Scott is doing a great job for us on the Montgomery County Board of Education. We are benefiting from his work with school districts across the country and his significant insight as a professor of educational leadership. The reason for that is that I know what I'm talking about. There is a need on the board which doesn't otherwise exist, either on the board or among candidates. That understand system level change and how to make a system better using the levers that we have with. From the board seat. That doesn't necessarily mean we can affect change at the classroom level. It doesn't necessarily mean we can be knocking on a million doors across the county and asking everybody what they think. We need to engage community, but we need to also engage in systemic efforts to improve. Across a very large county with many needs, especially among our students who are most underserved. Black and brown students, students with disabilities and those who are emerging multilingual learners. The system experience is what's needed on the board and I hope, I hope you all agree. Thanks.
Hi, everyone. I'm Julie Yang. Thank you for being here today. You asked really important questions. One of our fail policy was adopting curriculum two point oh. Because we did not listen to the community feedback at the time. Now, the last few years have been a struggle, a real struggle for everyone, especially our students and everyone involved in educating our students. I experienced it as a staff member and I heard it countless times on the campaign trail. Now, I'm running to serve on the Board of Education of Montgomery County, Montgomery County, nowhere else. My focus is on Montgomery County. As the school system, we hire superintendent, a deputy superintendent, a chief operating officer, a chief. And a chief academic officer all to do the system-wide work to run the school system. However, we have voters, voters like you. That get to vote for every member of Board of Education. Because the board represent the people's will, the people's vision for education in this county. So I would like to be that voice for you. I'm part of our M C P S. Community. I will bring that type of leadership to our Board of Education. Now, my plan is to devote myself full-time and be present in the community. Now, I'm proud of all. Now, I'm proud of all the twenty-four official endorsement. I'm proud of that. But I'm most proud of the eighty-four thousand votes from grassroots voters like you who trust me to serve on the board. And in the next three years, your endorse, four years, your endorsement is what I seek. Thank you so much.
I thank you for this opportunity to uh, accommodate my schedule and my need as president of the board to be somewhere else on Wednesday. I also want to indicate that I think that um, access and opportunity are our key issues. It's the area that I have the most experience in. I have demonstrated leadership in, in, in three of my four years on the board. I've been an officer. I was vice president, and I have been president for two years during COVID. And I think what that shows is that, that my colleagues recognize my ability to be able to bring together different perspectives and move the system into a direction that we need to be going. So I'm looking forward to my continued work on the board, and I hope that you will support me in that effort and reelect me. Brenda Wolf, Board of Education. Thank you.
I want to um, close out by expanding on why uh, you all, people listening and attending this session, should vote for me. I have a strong track record on the Board of Education for expanding equity, access, and opportunity for all of our students. I have worked to improve communication with stakeholders. I have worked to increase transparency with the school system and accountability. I think these are things that if you value uh, these characteristics, then this is some, uh, I am a candidate that you should vote for. I have worked in Montgomery County for fifteen years, and I have a deep knowledge of the many complex issues that impact our students and families. MCPS cannot do it alone. We have to work in partnership with Health and Human Services, with Montgomery County, with workforce development, as we prepare our students for, to be future employees of our companies. I have those strong relationships with our community leaders, both elected and uh, from organizations that I can leverage for the benefit of our students. Finally, as a former free and reduced meal student, who was also undocumented and um, an English language learner, I know the value of a high-quality education and how it changed my life. I want to bring that to all of our students in MCPS. Thank you so much. I hope to earn your vote. You can learn more about me, of course, at my website, carla silvestri dot com. Thank you.
And in closing, I just want to thank everyone for their time, the candidates for taking the time, those even who it took time to video some statements, you all for coming, and uh, my staff for helping with the video and getting through these techni- technology glitches. I can't, I can't thank them, I can't thank them enough. One thing I just want to leave with, hopefully, we've informed you on the, these choices. Just as a reminder, but in contrast, at large, Ms. Carla Silvestri, Mike Erickson, District One, Grace Rivera Owen, who is not here nor had a video, Ms. Esther Wells. District Three, this is, you guys got it up, up close and personal, Scott Joffe, Julie Yang. And last, but definitely not least, Brenda Wolf, who was on video, and Valerie Cole, who is here. So these are your choices. Vote, vote, vote. Thank you for coming.